Good evening. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
I can have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda. That's presented. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
And tonight, we're going to ask members of the Lambda Lambda Omega Chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able. That will be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for announcements of our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. March Madness is upon us. As such, we are hopeful to see no more snow. However, we have just recently recognized members of what we are affectionately referring to as our snow team for their incredible work over the course of January and February in supporting us to be in school as much as possible. Recognizing that we did miss eight days, there's a likelihood that without the snow team, it would have been more than that. They visited schools, they cleared parking lots and sidewalks, and helped us get back to normal operations as quickly as possible. We're grateful for their help. Yesterday, had an opportunity to spend the day at our three high schools as part of the Student Voices Tour. We were at Warhill, Lafayette, and Jamestown, engaging our students in conversations around instructional course offerings, design of courses, use of generative artificial intelligence, safety and security, and other student supports. Those conversations are always engaging, and our students have critically important things to share with us. Next week, we look forward to continuing that tour with our middle school students, and we'll bring an update back to the school board on April 1st. Also recently, we had an opportunity to spend time with the members of our Support Employee Forum. Last year, Support Employees of the Year become members of that important forum. We get together several times over the course of the year. The last meeting with this particular cohort group happened last week. This group of employees provides incredible feedback and important dialogue to help strengthen our workplace, and we were grateful for their service and look forward to welcoming a new class of that forum group. As a reminder, March is Disability Awareness, Inclusion, and History Month. About 175 of our WJCC families helped celebrate this past weekend at the Family Festival Fun Day held at Lafayette High School. There was a petting zoo, there were games, there were train rides, there were even rocks that were painted, and perhaps a picture of that is online as well. Also want to remind you that in collaboration with William &amp; Mary, that you're invited to join us on March 30th at 1:30 PM, Williamsburg Regional Library for a screening of Intelligent Lives and a discussion around intellectual disabilities. And finally, this evening, wanted to reference that the Teacher Supply Shop is turning two years old. The shop remains available for our staff members to buy, "buy" in air quotes, for free, everyday supplies that are necessary in the classroom. The team here and central support fills, on average, 100 orders a month. You are certainly, as a member of our community or audience, welcome to donate or volunteer. If you'll just visit www.wjccschools.org/tss, Teacher Supply Shop. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. I believe Ms. Chen has the report from CAC.
I do. I was going to also talk about how on March 30th, the Intelligent Lives, so thank you, Dr. Kiefer, for mentioning that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chen.
And if everybody comes out. No, absolutely. I'm glad that the poster is out there, and it should be circulating in our community, so we get good participation. I'll add two more things from CAC Update, which is the Special Education Advisory Committee. We got an update about planning for the Exceptional Games, which according, I'll quote Dr. Thomas, who is our coordinator of Special Education, our Exceptional Games are the best party WJCC throws every year. So hopefully, we get lots of volunteers and involvement. That date, marking your calendars, everybody, is April 25th, and here on the school board, we need to be working on our hula hooping, because that's what we did last year. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is, we got a wonderful update from some parents whose children in second grade from Matoka were involved in our partnership with YMCA and learned to swim and increasing safety around water. And so their children are autistic, and it was just really, it was really touching to hear their stories and how they felt like their children were supported. So just wanted to share that CAC success story with everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Are there any other reports from board members? Alright, then we will move on to student and staff recognitions. Mrs. Hunley, will you join me on the floor?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are excited to recognize several teachers for their hard work and dedication to lifelong learning and continuous improvement. These individuals have either newly achieved or renewed their status as board-certified, as national board-certified teachers. Before we share more about this recognition, I'd like to invite our NBC teachers forward. Not everyone was able to join us this evening, but I will read the name of each, so we can celebrate everyone. Teachers who have just achieved board certification: Amanda Bartuziak from Bright Beginnings, Ashley Green from Clara Bird Baker, Andy Kayson from Jamestown, Cara O'Grady from James River, Jennifer Marzana from Lafayette, Suzanne Sylvester, also from Lafayette, Catherine Moore, and Catherine Moore from Laurel Lake. Teachers, please remain at the front, as I now call forward teachers who have renewed their board certification. Sarah Vibold from Bright Beginnings, Jennifer Carter from Clara Bird Baker, Jennifer Berry from Jamestown, Sherri Jones from Stonehouse, Renee Roberts, also from Stonehouse, and Cherry Seawright from Tuana. National Board Certification is a highly respected professional certification in the field of education. The outstanding teachers standing before you completed a rigorous year-long process to examine, document, and reflect upon their teaching practice and student learning. The process also included an assessment to demonstrate depth of content knowledge and pedagogy within their specialty. Congratulations to all of these outstanding teachers. Madam Chair, this concludes recognitions.
Alright. Congratulations again to everyone who just received that certification certificate. I know that's a lot of extra hard work, and we're proud that you chose to do that. We will now hear a school spotlight from Clara Bird Baker Elementary School.
Good evening, guys. So one of the beauties of being a school principal is having great people that work for you. So Ms. Greg Alonis and Ms. Green approached me over the summer and said they wanted to revamp, totally revamp, our MTSS program. And so I was like, okay, what does that mean? And she said, well, we want to emulate what Laurel Lake has already done and what Jamestown's already done and implement the house system, which is a huge monumental task. It really is. So I'm gonna let these ladies take over and talk about their journey of creating the house system at Clara Bird Baker.
Yeah, so we decided to start the house system at Clara Bird Baker this year, and it has been amazing, actually. We split the kids into four houses. They're dens, because we are the bears. And each week, they compete for points, and at the end of the nine weeks, we tally the points and the winners get a party. But it's a healthy competition, and we're teaching our children how to win gracefully and lose gracefully. They need that. But there's just been a lot of excitement around the school. It's building small communities inside of our bigger community, and we've just had a lot of excitement around it. And we just finished a huge service project with our house leaders. We donated over 3,000 donations to fish, and they picked that up yesterday. So, this will tell the rest of our story.
We decided to divide all of the students into four houses based on certain character traits, and they compete weekly for points for their house. And then we have quarterly house parties for those that win. And our hope for this was to help increase attendance and help create little communities inside our overall community.
It motivates you to want to go to school and get your attendance up and just get good grades or be good in class and stuff, because then you can just have a party, and it seems really fun to just have a party.
The house system is for everyone. So it's for the students to get to know other people in different grade levels. It's for the staff and the teachers to interact with students they may not have known before. They get to meet new students in different grade levels when they go to the house meeting. And it's also for our community, because our house system puts on events that helps our community as well.
During the house meeting, they learn the chant of their house, and we talk about their character trait.
Great. We're teaching them how to be accountable, brave, respectful, and encouraging. But we're also teaching them how to win gracefully, but also how to lose gracefully.
Give them little kudos and snaps. Nice job, you guys.
It gives everyone a chance to be competitive, but it still lets them be like in one family altogether.
You know, the kids have more of a sense of belonging. Some of our younger kids can have an older role model to look up to.
And I got a chance recently to meet Jameson High Schoolers, because they do this house system. And they came in and sat down and told us about like leadership and all that.
Our leaders are really good about making their presence known and making sure that, you know, they're acknowledging our younger students.
As a result, I'm seeing that a lot of students are excited to come to school, they're excited to earn those points, and overall, I think we're seeing a lot of team building and a lot of relationship building between the students as well as between the students and the staff.
So all of us are four dens and one family. Yay!
Again, I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Green and Ms. Greg Alonis, who was their brainchild that did this. And so, like I said, it's a monumental work, but what I've seen is the camaraderie among the students has increased, the morale among, the culture and morale of the students has increased, and it has an impact on our school attendance, really has had a big impact. So thank you, ladies.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that and for all the effort that went into that. It sounds, by the looks of the video, it's like the students really enjoy it. So, that's wonderful. Alright, we are moving on to public comment. Over to you, Mrs. Donner.
Thank you.
Click over. Click over. Okay, alright. No, but it's okay.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any audible demonstrations during the speaker presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Do you miss Mrs. Donner?
Our first speaker is Matthew Sanderson.
Good evening, Dr. Kiefer, and distinguished members of the board, and thank you for those that attended our production of Something Rotten Junior at Hornsby last weekend and Wizard of Oz this weekend at Berkeley. It is important to support our WJCC fine arts programs, and I appreciate you showing your support by attending our shows and celebrating our students. I want to take this opportunity to share with you some numbers that you must consider before finalizing our budget. The following are my own statistics for this year, but they are representative of my peers across the division. 1,131 is the full year stipend for middle school dramatic sponsor. 703 are the number of extra hours I have given my program outside of contract this year. 409 are the number of extra hours spent inside Hornsby on Something Rotten since we returned on January 8th. 392 are the number of emails sent to and from my musical families. 75 are the number of students I had in the cast and crew. And 1.61 is what my hourly rate would equate to if the theater stipend was paid by the hour. Keep in mind, this will continue to go down as the year progresses. I bring this to you now because we, as a division, cannot continue to celebrate our students and staff in words alone. To quote William Shakespeare in our production, "Words without thoughts never to heaven go." I urge you to reconsider the proposed budget and increase your allotment for staff raises and stipend equity. To put things in perspective, last year, WJCC gave $84,289 to our seven secondary schools just to pay football coaches for one season, while the same seven schools were only given $14,856 for all theater programs for the entire year of theater. As a division, it is time to recognize and correct this inequity. Please show your support and appreciation by reconsidering this proposed budget, and please remember, "To thine own self be true." I will leave you with one final number, and that number is one. That is the number of school board members needed to enact change and to correct decades of inequity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson.
Our next speaker is Nathaniel Krish.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Nathaniel Krish. I live at 702 Hamilton Street in Williamsburg. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm here on behalf of the student, of the parents of elementary and preschools to age students in the Pinecrest neighborhood. Our bus stop was recently relocated to Page Street, which is inherently an unsafe street. While it may technically meet certain policy requirements, the reality is that the four-lane arterial road with narrow 11 to 12-foot lanes, no shoulders, and a sidewalk directly adjacent to high-speed traffic create an inherently hazardous environment for elementary school students. The process of 15-foot grass strip behind the sidewalk does little to mitigate these risks, as students are forced to wait for mere feet from vehicles passing at unsafe speeds. Over the past week, I have estimated the average speed to be in excess of 45 miles an hour on a 25 mile an hour road. Additionally, the new hazardous left turn maneuver required by the bus increases exposure to these dangers for both students and the driver, conflicting with intent of the policy to minimize risks. The decision to relocate to the Page Street, to the stop to Page Street appears to prioritize convenience over safety, while operating efficiencies may have been a factor. It is worth noting that under the former routing, the bus navigated quieter residential streets, stopping centrally at Gorven Hamilton and exiting back least, safe back lane with a right turn back onto Page Street. This route minimized time spent in high-traffic roads while providing equitable, safe access for all families. Alternative viable options that ensure safer conditions while preserving efficiency. Additionally, relocating the stop to Page Street has merely shifted inconveniences from one neighbor who complained the students and parents waiting for the bus were setting off her doorbell camera to another while introducing new risks and operational challenges for the bus driver. These decisions do not simply redistribute burden, but instead reflect safety. Thought should instead reflect thoughtful, safety-driven priorities, solutions that prioritize the well-being of all of our children. I respectfully urge the board to reconsider the decision to relocate the bus to a safer, more central location in Pinecrest.
Thank you, Mr. Krish.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Kane.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you directly this evening. I'm Elizabeth Kane, and I did teach here in the school system. I'm retired now, and I enjoyed my time here teaching. I understand that you're going to be interviewing and looking for someone to be the new superintendent. I'm here to talk about that a little bit. I thought that maybe, you probably maybe already have somebody in mind or some kind of person in mind, or someone who thinks this or does this, or I don't know what you're thinking. But I was thinking about, what if I were doing this, and what would I want to ask the superintendent? And thinking back on my years teaching. And what I really want is for more of the students to be reading and doing math at grade level. And so I think what I would be looking for is a person who could, with hard data, demonstrate that they were able to do that from year to year and got that going in the right direction. More and more students. And I really think that that would be the most beneficial thing that you could do for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kane.
Our next speaker is Andy Kayson.
Good evening. My name is Andy Kayson. I'm an English teacher at Jamestown High School and treasurer of Williamsburg James City County Education Association. I just wanted to make a comment on the budget. I'm speaking as an individual, by the way. I know there was a lot going on in the budget. It was like a stone soup. Everyone had something to throw in, even the state. A lot of new requirements. And I'm saying, I'm glad you guys went with a big ask. But I was very discouraged to see that you didn't add in any of the things that we would like to include. For instance, our survey said that many, many of our members wanted an opportunity to get paid for work outside contract hours, for duties that are assigned, those other duties assigned outside contract hours. That could be bus duty, IEP meetings. We also advocated for an increase of stipend and equalizing those stipends, and then also the longevity bonus. All those things were very high priorities, and we didn't see them in the budget. If I overlooked that, please point me, point out that in the budget. And I'm also concerned about the compensation study. I fear that we're going to be constantly nearing competitive pay, but not quite there, especially if we break up that. But I understand, we had to break it up, and you guys went for a big ask from the Board of Supervisors. Hopefully, they're able to pay, pay their share. As for the committee on the James Blair name change... for the Committee on the James Blair Name Change, I wholly support this. It's bold action that needs to be taken. History needs to be taught fully. But how we honor those agents of history and how we craft our narrative as a society is a collective endeavor. And I applaud you guys for starting the committee in order to decide on that. Now, speaking of committees, we asked this board for a Committee on Collective Bargaining so that, as a community, we could see its feasibility. But again, that was, that was not needed. So again, I would advocate for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Our next speaker is Cara McLean.
Good evening. I'm Cara McLean, and I know you're busy, and I just thank you for all the hard work you do, and God bless you. I wanted to share that I'd heard lately and have been told in writing over the last few years, that the rules of the state are carefully followed, but I have not always found this to be so. According to Williamsburg James City County IGAH policy, the codes of Virginia and the Board of Education Guidelines for Family Life are to be followed, stating that parents may view the complete Family Life curriculum and that a complete copy of all the material, audio, video, and printed is, would be in the school libraries available for review, and parents may opt their child out of any or all sections to learn something else without repercussions, and it must be age-appropriate, medically accurate, and abstinence education material. Much of the material is very good, but parents still need to get to decide. I was told by email last April that all schools had a computer in the office ready for parents to see the material, but I have found all schools do not have the computer at this time. Some information is still not in the binders, including Family Life Parent Resource Guides that are online, but are not in the school binders. Per the Virginia Code and WJCC IGAH, make sure the computers and binders are available in each school office and that all binders have the printed material, Parent Resource Guides, 2020 Standards of Learning, the Codes of Virginia and Board of Education Guidelines, IGAH Policy, and opt-out forms. For transparency sake, fourth and fifth grade parents need to know that their child, per a decision last May and June, will be, for the first time, learning about the opposite sex's private parts and functions along with their own. They have not learned this before. And sixth through 10th grade also learn about puberty and reproduction, boys and girls together. And the sex trafficking website is at Central Office to view if they are concerned. I am giving you the codes and policies I mentioned, as you are, as the school board are in charge by Williamsburg NVA Code.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
And our final speaker is Susan Hildem.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am Susan Hildem, representing the York James City, Williamsburg NAACP. I'm here to present some of the reasoning in favor of changing the name of James Blair Middle School, because there are community members who think that the school name doesn't impact students. However, since it has been reported to this board in recent memory that minority students do suffer harassment, I even wonder if the current school name may be giving some students the impression that their acts of harassment and intimidation are acceptable. James Blair was a slave owner who encouraged the colony of Virginia to encode slavery into its laws. He believed that Africans, excuse me, and Native Americans deserved subjugation. He, like many of his peers, believed that people of color were unintelligent, could not be, and could not be educated. We see today that these minority peoples are clearly capable of accomplishing all that the founding fathers were capable of. In fact, many African Americans and Native Americans stood at their sides during the American Revolution. It is a shame that their descendants have to attend a school named after someone who has so little faith in them. Is it right for a child to attend a school named after a person who advocated for their ancestors' subjugation, who believed them to be uneducable, who believed they were beneath him, who profited from their labor without fair compensation, and who did not consider them worthy of respect? Let us rename the school in a way that gives every student confidence and self-respect, and encourages each one of them to fulfill their potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildem. All right. We will now move on to our consent agenda. It consists of Item 7.01, Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll, February 2025. 7.02, Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting on February 18th, '25. Item 7.03, Approval of Minutes from the Work Session on March 4th, '25. 7.04, Approval of Minutes from the Joint Meeting on March 14th, '25. 7.04, Approval of Resolution R925, Month of the Military Child. 7.06, Approval of Resolution R1025, School Library Month. 7.07, Approval of Resolution R1125, Public School Volunteer Week. And 7.08, Approval of Resolution R1225, VSB A2025, Business Honor Roll. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
We'll move on to our action items. 8.01, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
8.02, Approval of the Special Education Annual Plan 2025-26 and the Title 6B Flow-Through Funds. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the Special Education Annual Plan 2025 to 2026 and the Title 6B Flow-Through Funds as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
8.03, Approval of Amendment to the FY25 Grants Fund Budget. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the approval of the amendments to the FY25 Grants Fund Budget in the amount of $8,508,591,307.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
8.04, Approval of the Right-of-Way Agreement and Request for Granting a Permanent Easement at Bright Beginning South Campus. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the right-of-way agreement as requested for granting a permanent easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus to Verizon Virginia LLC as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
8.05, Approval of Purchase Requests for Playground Upgrades at Laurel Lane, Matthew Whaley, Matoka, Norwich, and Stonehouse Elementary Schools. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for playground upgrades for Laurel Lane, Matthew Whaley, Matoka, Norwich, and Stonehouse Elementary Schools to Bliss Products for a total cost of $366,544.96.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Any discussion? No. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
8.06, Approval of Request for Proposal for School Division Redistricting Services. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for Request for Proposal Number 20250404, School Division Redistricting Services to MGT Impact Solutions LLC, parentheses, MGT, an amount not to exceed $153,735 and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
A second to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Are there any questions or discussion on this? All right, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
And 8.07, Approval of Request for Proposal for Health Pharmacy Vision, EAP, and Dental Coverage. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of the contract for Request for Proposal Number 20250264, Health Pharmacy Vision, EAP, and Dental Coverage to Anthem of Health Pharmacy Vision and EAP, and to MetLife for Dental Coverage.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. I think we have some discussion slash presentation on this.
Absolutely. If I could make some opening comments before Mr. Baker shares some additional information. I think it's important to note that our operating budget is 87% people. Of that, the healthcare portion of that operating budget is about 12%. Additionally, over 70% of our staff utilizes and takes advantage of the healthcare opportunities that we provide as a school division. Since August, administration has worked with a group of staff members to go through a Request for Proposal process whereby we are looking to provide strong healthcare choices for our staff, affordable healthcare choices for our staff, and also be prudent stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Mr. Baker will take you through some of the different pieces of the committee's process and finish that up with the recommendation. Be happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Keever. Tonight, I'd like to discuss the Request for Proposal for Health Pharmacy Vision, EAP, and Dental Coverage. A Request for Proposal for Health Insurance was issued on August 24, 2024, and responses were received by October 15, 2024. A committee was formed to represent school-based staff and central office staff in Human Resources and Finance. Two health pharmacy and two dental providers were invited as finalists to interview. The RFP Committee utilized a scoring matrix that included areas that would provide potential savings. They also considered provider networks, customer service, and innovation. While the local choice did not have to submit a response to the process as the current vendor, their renewal was received during the review, and the renewal was included in the evaluation of the plans. We received the local choice renewal at 8.9, with an 8.9% increase. RFP resulted in a 7% increase over the current year. This chart shows the budget impact of the increase for each vendor with a 70/30 and a 60/40 cost share. And please note that the total number of employees participating this past year, current year, is 1,327 employees. The next three slides will show some of the plan design changes with a few pertinent benefits highlighted on the highest coverage, the mid-range coverage, and the high-deductible plan. On this slide, the chart compares the costs of some of the common co-pay areas for the highest level of coverage with the local choice plan, Key Advantage 250, and the potential Anthem Advantage 500 plan. This chart shows the same information for the next level of coverage with the local choice plan, Key Advantage 500, and the potential Anthem Advantage 750 plan. And this chart compares the high-deductible health plans with the local choice plan and the potential Anthem Advantage plan. This table shows a comparison of current-year employee rates for the health insurance as compared to the estimated rates for the next, next year based on a 70/30 WJCC employee split. The red box shows the estimated monthly rates for the employee with the local choice Key Advantage 250 and the Key Advantage 500 plans, along with the monthly increase over this year. The green box shows the estimated monthly rates for the employees with the Anthem Advantage 500 and the 750 plan, along with the monthly increase if they enrolled in similar coverage to what they currently have. An enhancement that would be able, that we would be able to provide to our employees is by contracting directly with Anthem Advantage is the implementation of a dedicated benefits online portal. This portal would allow employees to enroll via the phone or online and speak with a knowledgeable benefits counselor on plan selection and changes. They would also provide an annual electronic benefits guide to help staff better understand their options. And additionally, we'd be able to make voluntary benefits enhancements and ensure that all our staff are aware of the coverage options that may be available to them. As a reminder, for the employee-only coverage, WJCC contributes $9,336 annually, and $14,976 for employee-plus-spouse coverage, and $22,524 for family coverage. The employee annual amount varies depending on the plan they select. The blue bar indicates the cost for a Key Advantage 250. The lavender bar indicates the cost for Key Advantage 500, and the orange bar indicates the cost for the Centerra coverage. This is a comparison slide based on the current proposed budget with a 3% raise implemented on the teacher scale, with the healthcare shared 70/30, with the rates based on the Anthem Advantage Healthkeepers 750 plan, with the local choice Key Advantage 500 plan. The dark blue line indicates the best-case scenario for a master's-lane teacher going from step zero to step one, and the master's-lane teacher moving from step 15 to step 16 based on plan selection. The lighter blue line indicates the worst-case scenario. For example, an entry-level teacher may see an increase of $1,675 if they selected, if they selected the health plan, was an employee-only, and the health insurance increase would be between $283 to $289 annually. So, the net pay increase would be between $1,392 and $1,386. For the mid-range teacher, receiving a $1,931 increase with a net of $1,648 to $1,642 for employee-only coverage, or $985 to $930 if they had family coverage. This is a comparison slide for the current proposed budget with a 3% raise implemented for grade six support employees, with the healthcare shared at 70/30, with the rates based on the Anthem Advantage 750 plan and the local choice Key Advantage 500 plan. The dark blue line indicates the best-case scenario for a grade six support employee, which is our teacher assistants, at the minimum, and a grade six support employee at the midpoint of the plan. The lighter blue line indicates the worst-case scenario. For example, an entry-level support employee may see an increase of $606 if the selected health plan was the employee-only. The health insurance increase could be between $283 and $289 annually. So, the net pay increase would be between $323 to $317. For a midpoint grade six support employee receiving a $773 increase with a net of $490 to $484 for an employee coverage, it could be potentially a negative $212 to a negative $228 if they had the family coverage. The committee recommendation is to award the contract to Anthem for Health Pharmacy Vision and EAP services, and award a contract to MetLife for Dental Coverage. The move to Anthem will allow WJCC to provide excellent healthcare options to our staff and does everything possible to limit additional cost burden for our employees. Moving away from the TLC also affords us with the ability to better manage the healthcare options and plans with the increased access to the plan data. This is a strong the increased access to the plan data. This is a strong healthcare option that is fiscally responsible, is also a fiscally responsible product. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any questions from board members?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Riffle.
In the last slide that you had where you were, the recommendation was for certain health group and certain dental group. When you had the charts showing the, the potential pay increases, was that including the dental with the healthcare cost in there?
It was an S- yes, sir. They could potentially, we'd have more control over the plan design in the future. We could break out dental and make it more just straight-on option to them. We could.
This is not a recommendation that we take lightly. It is a shift on behalf of the division. If you recall, we did a presentation in the joint meeting where we looked at health insurance rates for the last ten or twelve years, and it has been as high as thirteen percent in twenty fifteen to two percent, two point two percent in twenty nineteen, but it's gone steadily up through TLC. It was nine-nine in twenty-twenty-three, nine-point oh in twenty-twenty-four, and then TLC came back this year with eight point nine. We believe genu- genuinely that the, the recommendation that we're making is the absolute strongest option for staff and the strongest option for the organization to have a, a better handle relative to data for our healthcare programming, and also allows us to do more work around the idea of employee wellness. There, there is the opportunity for us to generate, I think, positive health, health momentum around wellness programming as we make the shift to Anthem that is not currently available to us in TLC.
Okay. So we are, as I understand it, we're being told that this option is pretty much one-to-one in terms of coverage or plans that people currently have, that they would find something comparable?
We believe that's the case, right? So we are bringing forward, the, the current plan through TLC is a TLC two fifty, TLC five hundred, there's a high deductible, and then there's the Centerra options that came on in the last couple of years. We are recommending the idea of moving to Anthem with a five hundred and a seven fifty, as well as a high deductible. So in some of the charts that Mr. Baker showed, the side-by-side comparisons, there are some nuanced differences with respect to deductibles. There are increases across the board for employees. The minimum increases are seen on the Anthem side.
So there's no two fifty equivalent, TLC two fifty equivalent, which was the cheap, the cheapest?
That was the most expensive plan.
Oh, that was the most expensive.
TLC two fifty is the most expensive plan.
Okay. So that, that's not really available.
We are moving that off the table.
Okay. So every, every staff member of WJCC will have to re-enroll in a new plan if we approve this?
That is correct. Everybody will need to re-enroll.
Okay. And do we have a system in place to advise or guide or help if there are questions? Is that?
Yes, ma'am. And that's part of the, what, what we brought forward with the, with the consultant with USI also assists with that, with the online and through the telephone system.
The benefits administration piece. So there, there would be an online portal, there'd be an opportunity to talk with people about your current healthcare scenario and the needs that you may have going into a new plan year. There would be a significant amount of communication that we would want to share with employees as we finish the spring up and start to look towards the new, the new plan year, which begins October one.
Okay. You have a question?
Just for clarity. So we won't have what we had last year where people could come into central office to talk? Everything will be online?
Oh, no, ma'am. We're not, we're not saying that. What we're saying is that, that the benefits administration program that we would be utilizing provides, I think, stronger options for access to getting questions answered. I think we felt like the open house and in-person benefits fair was a strong offering, and I would imagine that we would consider that again as we get later into the spring.
Okay. Mr. Riffle?
In one of your charts, you, you showed where certain employees may potentially be losing money even with the, the pay raise or pay increase. Do we know a pro- and I know that depends on which, which plan they, they take.
Can we, can we just pull that slide up? Actually, it's slide twelve. I was gonna ask that anyway. Can we, while you're talking, can we just look at that chart?
Okay. I was just curious if we know approximately how many employees that may affect.
We do. Let me get that.
The numbers he shared will be hypothetical numbers, and that the top blue bar, the darker blue bar, is if you are a single subscriber, you know, in that job category. The bottom blue bar is if you are taking the family coverage of the five hundred plan.
Currently, in, in grades five through seven, our employees, there's, and this not, who's potentially impacted is negative. So these are folks that are, there's about two hundred and twenty-three employees that are grades five through seven, but the folks that are taking family, and that's the word is because of the family cost is so, uh, more to it. There's, there's thirty-eight employees that are in grades five through seven that take the family coverage. So it'd have to be those folks taking family coverage who are at the beginning of their career.
Again, going to that nuanced scenario where if you are at the lower end of this five, six, seven pay scale, and you take the family coverage on the most expensive plan, you could see a net decrease.
And what would someone in that scenario, well, how could they mitigate that?
You could choose a different plan. You, you maybe could choose the, the mid-level plan or the high deductible, or potentially if you didn't have your entire family coverage, if your spouse left the plan, or if you didn't have your family covered.
Okay. But it looks like that scenario is even worse if we, that, that's what TLC is on the, the right-hand side of the slide, right?
Correct. On the left-hand slide is, is what we're recommending. If we stayed with TLC, are the two examples there on the right.
Right.
So you're, you're exactly correct. It would be, it'd be worse if we stayed with TLC.
Okay. Are there any other, Mr. Riffle?
I just want to make sure, these charts are based off our, the budgeting unified scale, or is it based off the current scale that we're looking at right now?
These are based off our, our current scale.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're ready to take a vote, then?
Thank you.
Ms. Holler?
Aye. Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
All right. We will move on to item nine point zero one, review of KPI dashboard for Elevate Beyond Excellence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we are excited this evening to share with the board and the community that part of our KPI dashboard with respect to our strategic plan is now available on our website. We would like to steer folks in the direction of that because we think it's important to be accountable for what our goals are and what those KPIs are. It is an initial posting of our data with respect to the KPIs. There will be more KPIs that we are able to add as we move forward. This evening, we have a video prepared so that folks can learn how to navigate towards that, and I'd ask them to roll the
The Elevate twenty-eight KPI dashboard is a data visualization tool to monitor our progress toward the key performance indicators of our strategic plan. Community members can access preliminary data currently posted on the dashboard from our Elevate twenty-eight webpage on the School Division's website. In alignment with our key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity, you can use the navigation menu on the left to find student achievement data related to literacy, math, science, and social studies. Literacy data includes PALS data for grades K through two, and SLL data for grades three through high school. Using the interactive dropdown features, you can disaggregate the data by specific demographics. On the second tab for college and career readiness, you will find longitudinal data about our on-time graduation rate, which includes subgroup comparisons. On the third tab, you will find longitudinal data about student enrollment and advanced placement and dual enrollment courses and the governor's school program, as well as the number of advanced placement exams taken. On the fourth and fifth tabs, you will find longitudinal data related to our supporting priority of safety and security, including student attendance rates and the number of referrals resulting in short-term and long-term suspensions and expulsions. We will continue to work with Hanover Research to enhance the dashboard in the months ahead. Annual data updates will also be published each September.
Madam Chair, we'll be communicating information about our dashboard as well and the newsletter that goes out at the end of this week, and look forward to getting feedback from our community around the items they're able to really dig in on and things that they may like for us to, to continue to consider posting.
Okay. Thank you. Will that video itself be available somewhere for someone to go back and re-watch?
Absolutely. We can load that on the Elevate page. It's also, will be a part of the board docs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nine point zero two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-six operating budget discussion.
In our ongoing effort to put the board in the position to adopt a budget on the twenty-fifth of March, we wanted to share some additional number data with you as a result of things that we've looked at internally. We recognize through the conversation with the joint meeting that there is a, a desire for us to perhaps look at refining the number of the request, and Ms. Ewing is here this evening to show you an update and to answer any additional questions you may have.
And I'm going to read my disclosure statement. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the FY twenty-six school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kiefer. This evening, I will review potential adjustments to the superintendent's proposed budget for the board's consideration. Currently, the superintendent's proposed budget includes a state revenue increase of approximately two point four million, which is based on the governor's amendments to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six biennial budget. We are currently budgeting sales tax at ninety-seven percent of the estimated allocation for our school division. Based on the projection for the current year and the past two years, we could move that up to ninety-nine percent of the estimated allocation, which would yield an additional three hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred in revenue. For the current fiscal year, sales tax was budgeted at ninety-nine percent. The second adjustment is related to state revenue that we receive for certain special education students. Based on the average amount over the past three years, as well as our approved amount for the current year, we believe we could increase that revenue from six hundred thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand. With these adjustments, our state revenue increase for fiscal year twenty-six would be two point nine million. Looking at adjustments on the expenditure side, the superintendent's proposed budget includes a reduction of four FTEs for bus drivers. Given our current staffing levels, we could further reduce driver FTEs by five for a total reduction of nine FTEs. This would decrease our expenditures by one hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have also recently learned that an existing contract for special education services will no longer be needed next school year, which is a reduction of eighty-five thousand. Earlier this evening, Mr. Baker shared updated information related to health insurance for the division. With the change to directly contracting with Anthem at a seven percent increase, this would reduce the amount for health insurance by one point five million. In addition, the Contract for Benefits Administration services has been built into this health insurance number, so we can remove the ninety-eight thousand from the budget for those services. Overall, this would result in expenditure increases next year of fourteen point four or five million. When you compare the revised increase in state revenue of approximately two point nine million to our revised expenditure adjustments of fourteen point five million, the difference is eleven point five million, which becomes our request to our funding partners. This amount represents a ten point seven percent increase above our current fiscal year twenty-five appropriations from the localities. If the additional funding of one point nine million that is included in the General Assembly's budget is ultimately approved, the request of the localities would be nine point five million. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding these proposed revisions that would be incorporated into the budget that the board would approve next week on March twenty-fifth.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Mr. Riffle, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. I very appreciate of your timeliness with the changes. I have just two questions. One would be probably more of an SBQ. I, I want to know, like, are trending data for attrition savings, just to kind of put that in perspective as we look into approving the budget on the twenty-fifth? And then my other question is, as we look into, I guess, the, the General Assembly's adjustment, we haven't addressed the thousand-dollar raises as such because, you know, there, there's a lot-
Right. So that's gonna be, um-
Future.
-given in the current fiscal year, so we would have to account for that in, in the current budget.
Sure. So we haven't, that's what I'm saying. Have you spoken about this? Like, do we know?
We have not spoken about that. No. But it, it, the General Assembly does include that funding in the current fiscal year. I don't have the numbers with me tonight, but I can get that information for you. We would bring something to the board to approve. Yeah.
At a later time, when we, it would be-
But once it's finalized.
Right. I think part of our dilemma is that it's hypothetical until it's not. I think we have a number that we think it would cost us as a locality based on what we've heard talked about, and that's just, just south of a million dollars is what it would cost us as a locality to fund that.
Can I ask a question inside that, even though it's clearly not a part of the slides? Is it fair?
We should probably stick to this budget discussion for the time being, if that's okay.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Um, any other questions or comments? This is the, this is the last time we will be discussing or asking questions before next week when we will approve it. We will have more time for discussion before the vote next week, but this is, this is the time. If you have questions or concerns or want to give direction between now and next week, this is, this is your chance. I think these, this will be the numbers, then, that we see next week. I think we are all, I think we're all torn in between the, the place of, of two realities, reality of what is genuinely needed and reality of what is actually available. And we have a sense already a little bit of what that's gonna be, and it's probably not anything that looks like this. But we, but we also have an obligation to put forth a budget that demonstrates what, what is needed, and we have certainly made an effort to cut anything that would be considered. I mean, it's never anything frivolous, but there were a number of, of wishes or requests that would have been wonderful that didn't even make it into the initial budget, let alone survive further refinement as we try to hone the numbers. And so we're stuck between those two realities, what, what is needed and, and what is, what is there. And so we have to do our part, and, and we are also, we understand that our funding partners have to do their part, and everyone has to make tough decisions. So, so these will be the numbers that we will see next week, and we'll take a vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. That brings us to board member comments. All ready? We're done. Mr. Riffle, would you like to begin?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll start with budget. I think it's a great budget. I think we've done our part here to get to a point where we can ask comfortably for what I've kind of been saying over the last couple of times we discussed this, going towards an attrition savings, similar to what we've- an attrition savings, similar to what we've given back in the past. This is kind of more in the fair game area. We're actually below the number, if I looked at the last report we gave this past December, so. And so I wanted those numbers, and Ms. Ewing, just to kind of think about it as we see the trending data. But the same thing in the second, the new dashboard is something that excites me as a Board Member. I think it's something we've kind of strived for is some type of transparency that kind of goes towards these type of goals. We, I think organizations often make these pie-in-the-sky-type plans, and then there's really not a way to kind of track our accountability in those things, so I think it's a good step for our Board and to kind of show the public that we aren't thinking about these things. But that dashboard will look essentially very different next year as we look at accreditation and the changes, so I think it's a good step, but those things clearly will have more adjustments as we move forward. Ms. Chin and I visited at JB Blatton Elementary School. That was such a fun visit. Always good to see our youngest learners in our division and the principals and the staff, and everyone seemed so happy. It's a Friday when we went, so I think that's kind of why, but I think they seem to be enjoying their part of the year before they get into testing and things, so I was just thankful to go and just hear some stuff from our newest staffers and how the spring is turning out, so I appreciate that. And my last category, I'll talk about Women's History Month. I think it's only fitting to talk about it here in education that we give a special shout-out to the women of our Board. There's actually very few majorities in local government where women are the majority, and the school boards are actually where that is a huge thing across Virginia. As somebody who is just a student of the game, I've looked into some of the numbers of that, and school boards actually are where women are in place and power across the localities, and so you should feel embracing that this is where it starts, this is where we have the heart and soul of our community, and actually the city of Williamsburg is one of the very few localities that have a women majority as well, so when it comes to the gender base. I just think it's very exciting. I work in a place where women are not in the majority with the General Assembly. I don't know what the day where that will be where that happens, but it's something exciting to mention and something that I am thankful for. I think a lot of the people who've taught me how to do my job in public service have been women. I would like to shout out my first mentor, Cheryl Moody Reddington. She was my first boss, she was Chief of Staff to Delegate Hayes, and she was just a beacon of light in helping me kind of craft my vision and understanding of how public service works, so thank you all ladies for what you do, and the people actually, if you look at the right, there's actually more women over there than in most school divisions, so we are around people who are strong and they dedicate themselves to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chin?
Yes, I enjoy kicking off school visits for the spring, so looking forward to some more of those, but yes, Mr. Riffle and I had a great visit to JBB Elementary School, so thank you to Principal Schweitzer for showing us around, and it's a lovely school, so go bumblebees, and we saw lots of learning, and it was just, it's one of my favorite parts of being a school board member and being able to do the visits together. Also, it's been great just to see on all of our social media platforms that students are out and about, the weather's great, spring is just around the corner, our students have been going on field trips. Ms. Handley and I are part of a really exciting one today where all of our 5th graders were at the chapel, Williamsburg Chapel, for a performance by the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, which was really a special performance, live musicians, and they were performing Holt's The Planets. So we got to go on a journey and hear music dedicated to each of the planets. We learned a little bit of history, we learned a little bit of astrology and astronomy, so that was a really fun experience, and many of our senior staff members were there, so it was just, and one example of many that our community shares, live music, live theater, live sporting events, so looking forward to all of that this spring. I'm also grateful that I got to be a part of, well, just sort of listen in on Dr. Kiefer, who did an amazing job connecting with our students in the high schools yesterday with the Student Voices Tour, so I'm looking forward to being in some of those middle school sessions. So thank you for that amazing idea and for all of our staff who led the discussions, and for our students, mostly, thank you to the students who participated and gave us their honest feedback, and I think we'll be all really excited to try to implement some of that and discuss that at our next meeting. So those are some things that I wanted to share about exciting events that I've been a part of.
Thank you, Ms. Chin. I'm going to jump over to Mr. Hosang.
Yes, Madam Chair. And sticking with the budget theme, I would just want to ask the committee that's looking into the name change for James Blair to not just consider what you discuss in your meetings, but also consider what's out in the social media world. There was a post after our last public meeting last month where I would guesstimate 80% to 90% of the individuals on the post that were commenting did not want to do the name change because of the cost that it would, that was one of the main issues that they were looking at, is the cost, especially for a city and county that is, I guess, kind of tight with money right now, and so that's one of the things that the vast majority of people commenting on that post were saying, and so I would hope the committee would take that into consideration when they're discussing this issue. The other issue I want to talk about is a school board question that I had posed and that Dr. Kiefer has answered partly, but we're still looking into it, is creating a new pathway between Whitehall and Stonehouse Elementary School. Right now, the path that they take is very close to Rochambeau Drive, it's through the woods, it's through another neighborhood, and there's another path, or there's another area, I should say, which would take the students completely away from the road. They wouldn't have to cross any roads, it would go straight from Whitehall straight to Stonehouse Elementary School, but it would require either the school system and/or the county to put in the walkway. There may be a gully or a valley in that area that would increase the cost a little bit, but I think for student safety, that would be something that would be great to do, especially when we've had some parents talking tonight about, and we've received emails regarding bus stops, that is not, may not be the safest for students. There's a lot of parents in the Whitehall area that do not think that that walkway and walking to Stonehouse currently is the safest for their students, so that would be something I think that we as a Board should be looking at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Henley?
Yes, so I would like to comment just one thing on the budget. If anyone was following the whole process from when we started, there were a lot of things that did not get into the budget. It wasn't that they weren't important. One of the things, and I know we still have a member here, the Fine Arts, the plays that we get tickets to see, I mean, we love, love, love when it's the season to see our young people. And for me, you know, I saw Rotten and I also saw The Wizard of Oz, and to see the high schoolers come back and help and mentor the younger students that are in the play, and even to see the high school theater teachers come back and help the middle school, and you can tell, and I know they're also going, "Ooh, I can't wait till that one comes up to high school, and I've already got a spot for them," but it's not that we don't value, and it took nine years for us to get into the budget. If I remember, last year was the first year we were able to put money in to get the high school theater teachers to a compensation level. It's baby steps. So I just wanted to let you know that we have heard you, and it's going to take some time, but we do value the Fine Arts and the work that you put in. There's not one of us that goes, that has gone to those that doesn't understand what you do, and I appreciate it. Second, again, exposing our children to things like the symphony, you know, it was so great to see teachers try to wake up students because some of the music was very soothing, and you know, you could see them. And then, when to clap, like, they thought it was over, the music went down, and one little boy, he clapped so loud, and then it wasn't time to clap, and the others looked at him, and I was like, that was a great learning, you know, opportunity, and it's because we don't expose a lot of time our children to these types of things, so it was good to see them learning some new things in a different way. And then you could see the kids that were watching, I could see kids scanning the whole orchestra, because I'm sure some of those 5th graders played an instrument, and maybe they were saying, "That could be me one day, I could be up there." So that was what, you know, I took from that, but we had a, it was just wonderful, so. And then, to the National Board Certification teachers, I know we kind of gloss over when they come up here, but being a nationally board certified teacher myself in the past, I don't know if people realize that 30% of the teachers that go into that program make it in the first year. It's a three-year process, and one thing is they have to take six tests that are each 30 minutes long, that's one part of it. Another part of it is there's an integration between a math and science lesson that you have to do, and then you have to do a 50-minute lesson, but you only have to take a 15-minute part of that to send in and talk about, and that's the same that you do for social studies and Fine Arts. And then there's a reading thing where you have to take two kids in your class, one that's a high reader and one that's a low reader, and you have to track them and show what you did for each of those students, and so I don't think people really understand what goes into National Board Certification. It's a lot of work, so really, congratulations. And then to re-up, to do that a second time is wonderful. And then we had someone comment on, you know, teaching reading, and we, even though Claire Bird Baker came up and gave their presentation for their school spotlight, they also won a literacy exemplary literacy award at the Virginia State Literacy Conference. So we are working on reading. We just adopted a curriculum, and we are doing the work in that area, and it's great because now other schools will look to Claire Bird, and they'll share ideas so that we can move all of us along in that area. So we're working hard, right now we're just really working hard on getting our teachers compensated and keeping them here so that they can do what they love to do best, and that's teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. Talking about visiting different schools, I was able to go to Matthew Whaley's Steam Night, which was so fun. It was just wonderful to see all of the kids there, and we had both teachers running experiments, but also some parents and some local businesses that shared with our kids things about architecture and urban planning, and the highlight of the night was Mr. Van Duzen setting off, I think, eight Diet Coke bottles that shot up very high with the Mentos in it and just teaching kids about that, and I think they made an improvement from last year when they did it in the gym and kind of stained the ceiling tiles, but it was just a wonderful night, and just to see all of our kids and families engaged after school. I would also just like to say congratulations to Claire Bird Baker on their literacy award. I know that they have really been innovative in how they've been thinking about literacy in our children, and so to see them continue to get accolades for that work is wonderful. And then also, again, to congratulations to our teachers who have reached that National Board Certification. It is such a huge milestone, and it just makes the quality of our schools even better. And I think as we were starting to look at the budget and, you know, the discussion about how much we put into the budget, we have been asked for a budget of need from the county and the city on multiple occasions, especially as they've been contemplating, you know, the going forward of what our division is, and so I think as a, for me at least as a school board member, to shave the budget before we even put out the ask, I know I'm in favor of we go forward with what is in the budget and what is that budget of need, and then we can have discussions after that point, but I think it's very important with being able to support our children from a literacy perspective, from a math perspective, from the extracurriculars, there's so much in there from restoration and the reset center, there's gifted education, there's a lot in that budget that really helps support our educational goals, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. I think most things have been said by the time it gets to me, so. I congratulate everyone who received accolades tonight for the National Board Certification. I know that's a big undertaking, and I appreciate Mrs. Henley describing a little bit more about it, because I didn't know all those details myself. And thank you to all of our speakers who came out. We always appreciate hearing what's on people's minds, what's going on in the community, feedback from things that we're doing and contemplating and working on, because we are not making decisions for ourselves, the seven of us, we're making decisions for our students, our teachers, our community, and so we love to hear from you. Thank you to everyone who sat here for the whole meeting, because it's nice to see some faces and not just a bunch of empty chairs by the end of the meeting, so we appreciate that. And I just want to say special thank you to the staff who've been working on the budget and the healthcare RFP and the incredible heavy lift that it takes to put all this together. It takes months and a lot of meetings and a lot of figuring out priorities, and the healthcare piece is pretty big, that's a huge undertaking, and I know everyone, I know all senior staff and all the Board members, we take that seriously because we know that healthcare is one of the most important things in a person's life and what decisions families make for themselves and their budget, and health is paramount, so we appreciate the work that went into finding an option that is going to hopefully benefit all of us, and that is absolutely our goal with that choice. Yeah, so we will, next week we will see our budget one more time, we will take a vote on it and hopefully approve something to move forward to our funding partners, and as I said before, our funding partners are truly partners, they're, we work with them to try to figure out and allocate funds. They have to make decisions not just about schools, but about other aspects of our community that we also all benefit from, and we appreciate the work that they do as well. So I will move on to upcoming events. The Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on March 19th tomorrow at 3:30 PM in room 108 of the School Board Central Office. The James Blair Middle School Renaming Committee will meet also on March 19th, and again on March 27th, both at 5:00 PM at James Blair Middle School. And most of us are going to the Consortium of State School Boards Associations, otherwise known as COSPA Annual Conference. We leave on Thursday, the 21st, we return Sunday, the 23rd, and we will be in Atlanta at a national conference. Our upcoming meetings, we have a special call meeting tomorrow at 12:00 PM in room 300 of the Annex. We have another special call meeting, as I mentioned, for the budget on March 25th at 4:00 PM, also in room 300 of the Annex. Closed session will begin on April 4th at 4:00 PM in room 300, followed by work session and action items, also April 1st at 4:30 PM in room 300. And then our next regular meeting is April 15th, closed session begins at 6:00 PM in room 300. The regular meeting begins at 6:30 PM here in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium, and in addition to all of that, the Williamsburg James City County School Board will be conducting interviews for the position of superintendent at an undisclosed location within the next 15 days. These interviews will be held in accordance with Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3712. With that, this meeting is adjourned.